Welcome everyone, thank you for joining us. We'll call this meeting to order at 6. And this is our public meeting of the City of Solidex Joint City Council, Susessor Agency, Housing Authority and Susessor Housing Agency regular meeting Wednesday, June 21st of 2023. Thank you again those that are joining us here in the chambers and those that are joining us virtually. Just a couple of items in terms of how you can participate today. You can join on the meeting via Zoom and the ID is located on the agenda for today. That's 874-688-35870. You can also call in to the meeting and the number is 1669-900-6833. And so with that, I will ask the clerk if you can please, we can please get real time.
Mayor Anna Valenzuela.
Here.
Mayor Colton Ben Minnis Jr.
Here.
Councilmember Alejandro Patis.
Allison.
Councilmember Maria Corlejo.
Here.
Councilmember Fernando Cabrera.
Here.
Okay, thank you. And we'll move on then to our next item on our agenda which is public comments. Closed session items. We do have one closed session item today and that is the city council releases to close session pursuant to government code section 54956.8 to give instructions to the city's negotiator concerning the sale exchange of lease of property located at Assessor parcel number 022-211-001. So at this time, do we have any public comments on the closed session items appearing on the agenda? And I will see if we have any virtually since we don't have any members of the public in our chambers. And I can't see any, right Stephen?
No, there are none.
Okay, so seeing that there is none, we will close a public comment period for closed session items appearing on the agenda. And then at this time, we will then recess into closed session and we will come back at 6:30 at the start of our public meeting. Thank you.
We are now at our public, uh, a public portion of our meeting. So we just were reconvening from closed session and I will turn this over to our city attorney before we put up.
Um, yes, mayor and council, the, uh, the city council met with its real property negotiator regarding a cessers parcel number zero two 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 one one zero one one. Provided direction to his negotiator and no other reportable actum estament.
Okay, thank you. So we'll move on to our next item and at this time it's a pledge of allegiance. If you can please. So I just want to let the council know also our community that. The solid dad high school in Jiro, J and J R O T C that usually joins us at the beginning of the month will not join us for the next couple of meetings until they. We convene from their, um, summer, summer break until August or September. So if we can please stand, Colleen, can you do us the honors?
Pledge of allegiance, who's your ally of the United States of America? And to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, infinite and just as for all.
So we'll move on to, uh, do we have any additions or ramifications to today's agenda? No. We'll move on to our next, um, item, which is our public comment. So at this time, any member of the public may address the city council on items. Not appearing on the agenda, but of interest, uh, to the public and also within the jurisdiction of the council. You do have three minutes. If you can please be brief. And you might come up to the podium, state your name and your address for the record. Um, so I will open us to public comments for those that are joining us here in our chambers. Any public comments?
Paulie, I'm seeing three seven four hundred minutes. I don't know if I should say this now, but on your agenda is our Swiss sausage barbecue. We had to cancel it. We didn't have enough time to put it together. I had a hard time getting cooked, so, um. I had to cancel it. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Pauline. Okay, any, um, other comments from those that are joining us virtually? Then sure. Okay, I don't see anyone raising their hands for those that are joining us on Zoom virtually. So at this point I will close a public comment period and we will move on to council presentations. Uh, we have three presentations today and we'll start with the solid and general plan and housing element update.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, and I'm one assistant planner at the City of Solita. Um, today I would be presenting a brief presentation of the current status of the general plan and housing element. Let me just sit up here. Okay. Currently, um, this is the agenda for the presentation. I'll be providing a brief status. Of the housing, housing element of the general plan, what staff has currently been doing with placeworks. Uh, we're writing and introducing the housing element in general on website. As well as providing a little bit more information of the efforts that staff have been doing in collaboration with the community and engagement department. With the G P A committee, general planning advisory committee, and then, uh, providing you more information on what's next with the general plan and housing element. So these are exciting times for solid as we are currently working on our housing element update in general plan. Uh, with the housing element, we're currently working on housing, uh, data needs since twenty fourteen to include into our next six cycle. Uh, how the element update, uh, we're also not only focusing on the past, but also. Focusing on the units will be building within the next, uh, six cycle or the housing element update. Uh, moreover, we're also, um, gathering that data from our community workshop that happened in April and focusing on the need means. Um, such as the site inventory list, uh, for this housing element update. Next we have the general plan. Staff is working with placeworks on gathering data needs for circulation, housing, economic development. Um, geographic spatial data and maps, uh, to update any needed information from our two thousand five general plan. Uh, we are also working again with community engagement and keeping the general planner advisory committee active and communicating with them. On any, um, and setting those, uh, keeping that energy of working toward the general plan update alive. Lastly, we are also working on existing conditions reports with the two thousand five general plan. Uh, Steph has been working on the land use element, demographics and economic development and currently. Uh, working with other departments such as public works on traffic and infrastructure for the city of Solita. Um, we would like to introduce the, uh, look slogan or look not logo, sorry, the, the slogan of the general plan. Siempre so le da, uh, we believe this, uh, looks. Uh, represents the idea and vision of solid for the next twenty years. Uh, siempre so le da forever solida kind of implements that solida is looking for. In- increasing economic development, social needs and environment and considering the environment. Um, but also keeping that small town feel that's all that I really likes and wants to implement for the next twenty years. Um, so that's what, um, that siempre so that has been a collaboration with community engagement, working together to. Uh, provide a vision on this general one. This is our current general plan website. Uh, you may be able to visit solidar general plan twenty forty five dot com. Uh, we have information here both in English and Spanish. The website itself can be translated. Uh, with the feature from Spanish to English and back and forth. The material that is publicly. Uh, provided to anyone is published on the website for residents to go back and visit. Um, and learn the material as well as any updates as we continue throughout this housing element and general plan process. Next we have the general plan advisory committee. Uh, as mentioned, this meeting was taken in April twenty fourth. The general plan advisory committee members are displayed in the presentation. And that meeting was highly into, uh, focused to introduce what the general plan is. Uh, and also focusing on housing elements and concerns that the G pack, um, wants to, um, be involved. Regarding the general plan and housing element update. Again, the general partner advisory committee is a key for the general plan update and working with community engagement is, is also key for this process. Lastly, the housing element. So what's next? So community and economic development department is working towards the development and updating its mission to H C D. Uh, in accordance with state laws and regulations, uh, we anticipate having city council party commission study sessions within the next few weeks. Um, currently, uh, place work is working on an admin draft for the, um, housing element. And it should be for public review by the end of August of twenty twenty three. Next, uh, what is next for the general plan? So, um. The general plan is overseen by the community and economic development, but is, uh, also a collaborative effort with all departments in the city. Uh, the next G pack meeting should occur in the fall twenty twenty three. And this will also involve a lot of community engagement for the next few months, um, involving the general penalty. Um, more data need will be done extensively and review the general and existing conditions is, uh. What staff is currently focusing on. Um, to end this session here, uh, uh, council can anticipate having a joint meeting with planning permission. Um, but at, by the end of this twenty twenty three year. Here is a great project timeline for both the general and the housing element, uh, for your, uh, ready to review. If you have any questions, staff is here to answer accordingly. Um, and lastly, I'll, uh, put the microphone over to Brian if he wants to make any closing remarks.
Ariana, I think you did such an awesome job with the presentation. Uh, the best general plans are the ones that are highly attended from our community, highly input. Uh, from all, from everyone. And so as council members and chief, uh, we, we need your help too to spread the word as these meetings move forward. Um, their community is the author of this document, so, uh, I want to constantly always talk about the general plan at every opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, Ariana. Thank you, Brian. So let me, um, open it up to see if there's any, any questions from the council and then, um, I'll take it out to the public if there's any question from the public. Uh, council, any comments or questions?
No, I just want to thank staff for, um, you know. Uh, moving forward with this, uh, organizing the, the committee itself, the G pack and them meeting and being on a timeline. And so therefore we can get this before the council. And, uh, the planning commission as well in the joint meeting so to review it. So again, thank you for, for your efforts and time.
Yeah, thank you. I, I, I have, um, just a couple of comments and these are from when we had discussed the general plan and the community engagement piece. Obviously, as Brian said, that's. That's a major piece, right? We want to make sure our community is invested in the general plan and they have their proper input. I know that there's going to be. Different community meetings and we have the G pack as well, but I think there's more to that than just that, right? So. I think the last time we had discussed it, we were looking at, and I don't know if it's on the outreach plan. I'm looking at different nonprofits that are already working with community members and how do we engage them also to help us with that outreach process? So the more that we can already. Work with the school district as well. Obviously they have a lot of the, the parents. And so really making sure that we're collaborating when we're sending out those, we, uh, invitations and flyers and then looking at those. Uh, community C B Os that are already here. How do we engage them as well? So they can engage, you know, the others that they're working with. So I, I know we have not reclined, scaled it down because it was very expensive. But, but I thought there was already some sort of other than the G pack and, you know, that there was more outreach efforts that were going to happen. So do we have? That is, is that available? Is it still being?
So it worked on currently under construction. But I believe the, the, the short term goal is to have that robust community plan, uh, going. So. Our G back members are part of the process of engaging the different, uh, groups that they, they may represent, so.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for. Okay. Thank you. Thank you for verifying that. And then just my other thing, I know that we were talking about the early conversations. I wanted to make sure that the general plan, obviously I know there's different elements that it has that needs to go there. They're, they're obviously because of regulatory provisions, but I know that I had talked about the health element. I know Gonzalez has a health element to their general plan and that was included as part of that. Is that, are we going to have that element or is it wrapped up with the other elements within the general plan?
It, it is not a specific element that is included in the general plan. Staff could always work with placeworks to see if that's an element that could be added to the general plan. I believe Gonzalez worked, it was like, it was a staff driven document. I believe they've worked with the Department of Health to do that. And so if, if there is direction to add the health element, it, it could be a hybrid where staff consultants or strictly consultant to, to help add that. But there was not, it, the cost was not included in the.
Yeah, I know I had brought it out before in terms of making sure that it was there. And I know that obviously there's different plans, but health is a really big portion that includes all the other elements as well. So I mean, there is now an opportunity to be able to still do it at this time, given the, obviously the cost of the general plan is expensive.
It wasn't a very expensive general plan. We took, took a lot out to be able to get it going. They want us to be looked at again, but out of that.
So Mayor, I may. I just wanted to add that one different thing that is now part of the general plan is environmental justice element, which has a lot of the health issues related to land use. And so I think there might be an opportunity even within the existing framework to have a health lens as we, as we look through the general plan and we can work with placeworks to make sure that it's there and definitely we can look at the Gonzalez health element and see how we can elevate some of those policies and programs that make sense for Solida.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you. I think a great job on putting all this together, especially with too many plans underway. So thank you. Thank you to the staff. Okay, so let me ask the public and members of our public that are joining us either here in the chambers or those that are joining us virtually. Are there any comments on the presentation of the general plan today? Okay, I see none. So thank you. Thank you so much for that. And we will look forward to more updates on our general plan and our housing element that are really instrumental. So we'll move on to then our next item, our next presentation, and that's the city of Solid Ed community economic development department. We give a presentation regarding attendance to the innovating commerce serving community conference.
We pick up from the Solida airport. Well, good evening, Mayor Glass, members of the city council, members of the public. My name is Brian Swanson, Kine Development Director for the city of Solida. Like to first give a lot of gratitude to the council. In 2022, during a goal setting meeting, one of the goals from the council was to, it's always a goal, is to focus on economic development. And the council and the city has invested over time with the Buxton tool, which is a data analytics tool, which gives us a lot of useful information when we try to talk to retailers. Our data is collected all the time, even if we don't know it from our phone, you know, how we pop on social media. And so that data helps us tell a retailer how to come here and why they should come here. And the council last year stepped it up to say, let's send staff to the ICSC convention. And so the ICSC convention is for the innovating commerce serving community organization. And it's held every year in Las Vegas at the Las Vegas Convention Center. And so Las Vegas Convention Center, if you've ever been, is three, four size football fields. And the event contains governments, real estate builders, real estate developers, all the national brands that are going to expand. And so it's the place to go to, to try to recruit and to make connections and to also talk about your community and market your community. And so Andrea Navarrete, Tensia Vargas, myself attended the event and we shared a space with Team California. And so Team California is a group that represents cities throughout the state and economic development. And it's been a very positive relationship that Solida has had. We had a space to meet with people, have our information about Solida out, which will hand out to you as another brochure that we had. I didn't drop them. But essentially it's a, it's the marketing brochure that talks about what we have in the community and our national brands. I think one of the conferences was professional development. So Tensia and Andrea have a big desire to learn more about economic development to grow professionally. And so it was very good to attend these different workshops. And the one workshop that I attended was incentives, you know, public, private partnership. And you got to hear from the private sector as to what the impediments that they see are with local governments. And so time, it's always about time, how long it takes to go through the process, how much permits are, how much impact these are. And so it, it, it was good to hear both sides of the street from the public sector and from the private sector. And, you know, always if, if a community desires to be economic development focused, it's always about customer service, answering the phone call, returning the phone call, returning an email, you know, being available to developers. And that helps them choose where they want to go. It's interesting that, you know, pandemic was all about online shopping. This year they said, online shopping is dead. People are not going back to the stores. If you know Bed Bath &amp; Beyond, they closed, right? They went bankrupt. All of those spaces have three to four different national brands waiting to get into them. Why? Because construction has gotten so expensive. And so the desire for brick and mortar is still there. It's always going to be there. So it was, it was very interesting to, to, to hear how incentives work, but also to hear from the development community as to what they're seeing with current trends. Retail, it's retail is something that all communities want, but it's sometimes very hard to get. And so with advancing retail, retailers want to know, you know, our demographics, our psycho demographics as to who we are, how we spend our money and, you know, location. It's always about location. And so, you know, attending that breakfast, it was good because I got to sit next to the real estate director or Tripoli was there. And so they, it was interesting to hear from them as to how they choose locations and what their, what their outlook is on the upcoming fiscal year for their development. And so it's a good place to go to meet, to, to connect because if you try to connect online, sometimes you just don't get a hold of people. And so face to face interactions is still the key to, to making deals happen. So this was on the back of our business cards. We had the information about Solida in addition to the QR code. So if you hit the QR code, you would get all that information. You would get demographics of the community, our patient, commercial opportunities. And then directed to our website. And so when you go to these events, all these brokers, they love swag. They like picking up, you know, freebies, but they hate, you know, just being bought down with so much paperwork. And so this was very useful for people to understand who, who we are in our community and what we need here. And so and again, this was the map that we had. So if you're, if you're a developer, you're going to see where we're at. We're off the highway 101. We have 78,000 track, average daily, daily traffic a day going up and down the corridor. We have national brands that you see on the map. The most important thing to this map though is all that color of brown. And so that's, that is undeveloped property. And so from a development perspective, I look at this location, I look at this map and I say, ton of opportunity right off the highway, look at all these different national brands there. And so and of course showing our Solida marketplace. And so it's, that was really beneficial for the people that didn't even know where Solida was at to understand where the communities are. So this is just a snapshot of the convention. The middle picture is where we had, that was our headquarters with Team California, where we shared it with multiple different cities throughout the state. It's key to have a location because it's, you can sit and talk to people. You know, and they, they just don't put chairs out to sit down. It's Las Vegas, everything comes at a cost. And so you know, having that location there was really important. And if you notice, we had our swag, we had our photos, our, our stickers and our brochures. Next slide. So the one group that we focused on at the event was our hotels, right? And so we have a hotel incentive program that the council passed a year and a half ago, maybe about a year ago. So we focused on meeting with Hilton, IHG, Hyatt and Choice Hotels. And how these groups work is that they work with franchisees on locations. And so we were put into contact with the regional director for the West Coast in which point they had our information, our packet, and then they tried to, they tried to, to find the franchisees that are looking to open in the West Coast and they give them our information for hotel incentive program. So it was very, it was very useful to have that program at this convention because it really turned a lot of people's attention to Solida. Yeah. And finally, that was, that was the, the location. We, that was in our little office area that we had and those were the different cities that we were grouped with. And so we were very appreciative to go and it's, it's, we, we feel that there's going to be some investment now again, sold down because of one in this conference. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Brian. Thank you for that. I really like the logo on the back. I think our council cards should have the QR code. I know a lot of, that's what a lot of people are doing just to kind of scan the information. So it'd be really good to have it for us as well, maybe directing it to like the website, but I think it's really important. Council, any comments or questions?
Just a couple of questions. Brian, so do we get any feedback from these individuals? I know you made contact and I know I love going to Vegas, Raiders are there now, you know, it's a lot of really good time. So hopefully you guys got some work in and then you could hear about the contacts we made. Are you presently in communication with any of those?
Yeah. So the ones that we are in communication with are already interested in the marketplace. And, you know, we wanted to talk to them to understand, you know, not only from the developer's perspective, but you know, what's the whole story of, of their, you know, their, their project there. And so yeah, I would say in the coming months, the developer may be coming to the council to talk about, you know, ways to get to the finish line with some of these retailers. And so the retailers, they have, oh, they have segments of the year in which they open. And if they missed, missed that segment, they move to the following year. And so all retailers, all national branded restaurants always want to open before Thanksgiving. That's the big time that people need to spend. The hotels, we're, we're a little more excited about hotels. We had a discussion with the hotelier the other day. They weren't at this event, but we definitely are looking forward to following up with the hotels that we met with and making sure that we are connected to the franchisees that want to expand.
Hopefully we'll see some preparation shortly, but within the next year or so, that'd be great.
Yeah, definitely.
Because I want to add to that. We did join, we did join Team California. They're an organization that represents cities, counties, you know, community, economic development agencies. So one thing that's great about joining them is that through them, they give our information out. So we may not have met them there, but they heard through them about us. So one of the, you know, we can use them as to market our availability and, and our dumpster park, all that's open on that one map. So it does help having that relationship and being, having their representation also.
Thank you.
And yes, I just wanted to thank you for, for this information. I'm a big believer that things don't always happen by, by luck. Maybe it's because I haven't won the lottery yet. But with that said, I think preparation and opportunity, you know, is usually the way to success. And you know, you guys were definitely prepared. I love the, you know, the pamphlet that, that you gave. I think also opportunity, I agree that I, I don't see a lot of investors and, and, and people coming to Solida to scout us out. So it's a friend that we go out and you know, I tip my hats to ICS Las Vegas because they know what they're doing. Obviously they, if we have this conference in Vegas, it will attract more people versus having it in Iowa. So you know, I, I just wanted to say that I'm, I'm glad that you guys were able to attend this primary event. And hopefully, you know, things, it sounds like things are coming down the pipeline. So thank you.
Yeah.
Just a couple of comments, yes, and maybe a question. First, thank you so much. You guys did wonderful. I do, I'm, I'm looking at the map and I, there's a lot of land right there. So do we have like an outline of possibilities? Is, you know, like a start getting a list of retail or restaurants, hotels, kind of start developing a map of what we want. And basically I'm a little bit influenced by that notion that when you write what you want, then things start to happen. Instead of hoping that they will contact us, they start creating a map of what we, we would like to have there. So there, so we can start tracking directly those individuals, those, those organizations or industries. The other thing is besides this conference, is there anything else? And I think that that becoming part of the organization is wonderful, but is there something else that we as a community can do to start promoting that section, opportunities? You know, I'm thinking about getting the map, maybe start developing something that, that we incorporate into our website. People will see it and this is a great opportunity for a restaurant. We don't have any restaurants of this kind in, in the area. We don't have hotels. Your hotel could be one of, start promoting our town in that particular sense.
So I think the, the data analytics that we have in the Buxton report, we actually include that on our website and, you know, for potential realtors that want to see what, what the leakage is here. So that, but it's a good idea to, to try to incorporate that into our physical maps in, in ways to see what could happen, right? And so, you know, having the national brands on the map is important, but also maybe finding tenants or other businesses that could, that have good co-tenancy. You know, good co-tenancy, you know, what goes next to a great Panda Express, well, another restaurant. So that's something we could definitely add to the brochure to, to further market the possibilities here.
Yes, because when you have a big lap and you say, wow, that's a lot, it's a big lap, but am I going to be by myself right there? And start drawing things that, that might attract people in essence.
And I will say this, that it's a really good time to have these discussions with the general plan, especially the economic development element. And there should be a very good focus as to, you know, being creative with our, our, where we're at, our, our tourism, our off, off the highway and that, that element needs to help us market. It, it needs to be a useful element to us, not just policy, but it needs to help us market the community even more from a development perspective. So.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, thank you, Councilor Cabreira. So I just, I have a question too in terms of, because I see all of these the empty land, but some of those obviously where they, they, we don't own, we own some, but have there already been conversations with some of these property owners that own this large portion of the land to be able to look at the, yeah, they're interested in selling. Obviously they're going to sell if it's the right, right. You know, the right investment opportunity for them. But have, have we already had those conversations where they are willing to sell the land and this is what our vision is and this is what we want to see come in here? Because I know that's really important to be able to fill these spaces with what we want, not. Because I know that's really important to be able to fill these spaces with what we want, not what, you know, people want to bring.
And I, I think one of the, one of, one of economic development 101 is talking to the owners of the land. To, to, so this, so they know who the city is and the city knows who they are, and they partner, we partner together on what, what's the highest and best use of your property? What kind of, have you ever thought about redeveloping? And so we know all the property owners in the area. We know that we talked to Mr. Masa, Bill Masa, very often of the vacant chipmunk property. That's 28 acres of, of prime real estate that needs to be redeveloped. Uh, the, the, the property is south of Fuzco. That might be the lowest hanging fruit in the city. It's right off, it's highway exposure, it's vacant land, you know, and we've made many attempts to try to foster a partnership with uh the owner there because we want to see something happening at that location. And so uh, you know, efforts of Tensy and Andrea, having the monthly capacitos, I think more of our local businesses and property owners are focusing on, hey, the city of Solida needs business and, you know, that's, we've done a really good job with engaging them, but uh constantly staying in contact with ownership of land is important. And, you know, we look at this as, you know, the, the, the job's not finished when we have open pieces of property. So it, you know, it's, it's a high focus for us.
Yeah, no, thank you, Brian. And obviously, these properties have been empty for a long time, but so there's the right opportunity, right? And I also agree that there has to be that synergy, and I think we have it right now with all the different components that are going on, and it's a good, good opportunity to be able to attract, attract people here um with what we want to see in those. So I, I'm just, you know, for me, the important thing that I know that although we're doing a lot of economic development, the hotels are really something that if we are going to really bring in the tourism base, we really need a hotel.
Yeah.
And we really need it badly because it's a hotel that can give us that opportunity to host people, but also has a conference space where people can actually have conferences. And now we present them with an opportunity to come here and stay here, right, and shop here. But, so I think that's a big piece of the whole economic development, and as we continue with commercial, it's great, but the hotel piece is that kind of the missing link that we really need to.
It, it's much of a missing link, but we, we're, we're very excited for opportunities that we feel are coming down the pipeline.
Yeah, well, thank you for the tremendous work. I have to say, I have some presence in Southern California, some elected officials, and they said, hey, Solida was in the house, so.
It was interesting, uh, the whole council of Bell was there. I thought it was brown act issue, but I wasn't getting into that. How about a water park?
Yeah, so well, thank you anyways for, for the presentation and thank you for your efforts. So um, as Councilmember covered it up, that if there's opportunities to be able to attend other, I know this obviously a lot, Vegas is a big one, but any other opportunities or any other, you know, connections that we can have. I know we have locally the MCCVB.
Yeah.
And so they're a good connection because they, they deal with a lot globally as well.
But, but you know, there's also the, there's a national industrial uh meetings that are just very, very similar to ICSC that you talk about future development of where they want to put different industrial properties. Warehousing is big, of course, right now.
Yeah, yeah.
With just distribution. And so there are the, there's tourism industries like this, there's bioscience industries, uh, you know, these kind of conventions and you know, it, it is good to go to those. So, you know, we, we can foster those segments in this, you know, we, we, we're looking for constant ways to come up with more employment for the region.
Yeah.
And if we could land a, a biotech enge- engineering or agricultural engineering company here, that's a big win for us. So the city should attend those conferences more often.
Yeah, agree. Yeah, thank you. Well, thank you both for that. And thank you for your attendance. So let me just take it up to the public before you all leave. Um, any comments from any of those government members joining us? Okay, I do see um Jennifer Johnson. Uh, Jennifer, if you want to unmute yourself?
Hi, Mayor, thank you. Uh, Jennifer Johnson, Vice President of Operations with the MCCVB, and just absolutely thrilled to see both the general plan, to hear all of the economic development, and that we've been in constant collaboration with your economic development team and you, Mayor, on our board to ensure that you have that outreach from a marketing perspective, which is what developers want to see as well. How are you going to help us fill our room nights if you do land that big hotel? So we're absolutely delighted to uh have the agreement on tonight's agenda as well. And we'll be presenting them before you with some results next fiscal year.
Thank you, Jennifer. Any other comments? Okay, see none, then thank you. Then we'll move on to our third and final presentation today. And that was, um, the City of Solida Police Chief, uh, Mr. Daniel Watson and Cal Fire Battalion Chief Jason Nothing Buck will give a verbal presentation regarding fireworks enforcement. And I know many of us already have received the complaints.
Good evening, Eric, Captain. As you know, looking for light is coming up and things have already started.
Yeah.
Uh, we have our operations plan in place. And we are going to have all of our folks here, our volunteers, our reserves, um, it's all hands on deck. And the reason um, we have to do this every year is some people just don't know and some people just don't care. So we have to beef up the forces and, and try to address some of these things. And I have some numbers here from Cal Fire, and this is uh, from 2021 back 10 years. Um, these are the reasons why we have to do what we have to do on, on Fourth of July. And these are just the reported numbers. Um, in that 10-year span, there were 8,427 fires caused by fireworks in the state of California. That was $32,856,000 worth of damage. And the uh content loss inside of those 32 million was another 11 million, almost 500,000. There've been uh 50 civilian injuries and four fatalities caused by fireworks. So that's why we have to come up with our ops plans. That's where you have to bring in extra folks um to try to address some of these things. We're um hoping that we can um use education um to get the folks that don't realize and don't understand the harm that they could be doing with the illegal fireworks. We're posting it on our, our Facebook, our website. Um, the, the city's doing the same. We're putting all of the Cal Fire information out on what are legal fireworks, what are illegal fireworks. Um, how to use legal fireworks, and we're also um putting out uh the outstanding violations um for illegal fireworks. And I, I don't think a lot of folks realize that uh there's quite a few misdemeanor charges. There are the health and safety codes for illegal fireworks, but there's also a lot of felony charges for illegal fireworks. And um, in the uh documents that I'm putting out, I, I don't think a lot of parents realize that they're liable for any damage that happens if their siblings, kids, children, family members are using illegal fireworks and something bad happens. So we are focusing on the law enforcement part of this. Like I said, we're hoping the education, we're hoping to put this stuff out so that people can, can see it and realize what's going on. Um, and, and hopefully not use the illegal fireworks. Um, every year I, I go out by the river, actually on the side, and it looks like the entire sky is lit up from stern to stern. It doesn't matter, it just fireworks as far as you can see. So we're hoping that then kind of head some of this stuff up, starting early and putting some of this stuff on our uh website. Do the fire department.
So good evening, Madam Mayor, Council. So as you guys know, we had a big rain this past winter, so the grass crop is beyond what any of us have seen growing last 10 years. Uh, weed abatement for the fire department, we have 56 notifications out right now for parcels. That's within the city limits alone. Um, drove around just as recent as today, there's a lot of lots that still need to be vacated. Uh, so we're going to continue the notifications of those parcel owners and go through the process and go down the code enforcement side if it's not fixed after the second notification. Um, just to be clear with everybody, we're going to do our fireworks inspections on all the sales, the four fireworks boxes that have been selling fireworks. Um, and like Chief Watson said, we're going to do a huge public education piece. So we're going to be doing a safety message from the fire department, from the police department. And we want everybody to understand that safe and sane is legal, but there is still a potential for harm. You can still definitely get hurt by safe and sane fireworks. And we want the public to know, if this, even if a safe and sane firework is lit and lights someone else's property, you can still be held liable for it. So we're going to strive very hard over this next 12 days through public, public education, working with Azus. We know social media has a great presence, and you're going to see a lot of social media outreach. If anybody, the public that's listening, if anybody needs to drop off illegal fireworks, they're more than welcome to at the fire station. And we will have State Farm Marshal's Office come and get them. Over the week of Fourth of July, there is going to be a heavy fire presence. The day of Fourth of July, you'll see multiple fire engines enter around the city. But we got to keep in mind that there's vegetation everywhere around the city. Um, every year's been busy, and I don't think we've seen a grass crop like this in 10 years. So it is, it's going to be busy first, but we need the public's help to maintain that situational awareness. Other than that, unless there's any questions?
Yeah, thank you, Chief. Um, thank you, thank you both for that message and um, it's important. I know that, you know, we do have some members of our community that are joining us today, but this is also on live Facebook. So hopefully there's more that are joining, listening to the message, because I think we've all been hearing the fireworks that have been going, that have been going off already. And I, I think for me, the other component to that is the city invested $20,000. That's $20,000 of our public's money, of your dollars, right, of our community's dollars to be able to have a firework show. We did it last year as well, and that's pretty significant. That could have been used to do something else, right, to improve something else. But it's $20,000 for our community to enjoy, you know, a nice firework show without having to use some of the illegal fireworks that have, that we traditionally, as you said, Chief, have seen in the past year. So I just, for me, I think I want to make sure that our public understands that, that the state has invested $20,000. And, and we'll continue to do that, but, but it's important that our community support this effort and reduce the illegal use of the fireworks and understand that component as well. Um, but thank you for that. Um, thank you for just raising that awareness and the, the public outreach, because I think that's an important component. Um, so uh, let me ask the council if there's any questions that they may have or comments?
Just went uh through the chair. Uh, Chief, I, I've seen one community where uh the law enforcement agency were able to cite the homeowner. So um, I know we've talked about, and you shared this with us, about um, you can't sign unless you see the individual like the actual firework itself. In one of these, I can't, and it just sticks to my mind, and I saw it and I should have wrote it down, I didn't, but they're able now to go ahead and hold the homeowner that accountable for. So if they're going off in the backyard and they see them, and you're able to identify it's coming out of that residence or, or that property, um, there is an admiral or vehicle to, to cite them. So I don't know if you're, to my door, if it's changed or, or, we can look into that.
That's why we're, we're kind of doing a different we're kind of going in a different direction this year, and we're using these health and safety code sections because it does have sections in there like that, and it's also got restitution sections. Um, if we have to respond to a call or the buyer has to respond to a call. So we're, we're looking at changing up our code sections that we're going to use this year.
Great, because I, I know that you guys get frustrated, both of you, with trying to enforce it, and, and we're getting it from the people because of the dogs, the elderly, vets, you know, um, so it, it's important that you realize that we are like the mayor said, that we have a firework show, one that's safe and is planned out, and it's a beautiful show, you know, 20 minutes. And uh, for people to come in and say, well, I got a whole bunch of fireworks from, uh, you know, Canada, and I'm bringing it back over here to set them off. You don't mean Canada, right? Enjoy always.
Thank you. Um, yes, uh, just want to thank you both for, for all your efforts. I know it's, you know, frustrating for, for all of us, as it is for our, our residents. Um, this one is for the fire chief. I was um, just going to ask you, that you were going to be sending like a second, I guess, uh, second letter to uh people that have to take care of their, of their lots. Is that going to be done before the Fourth of July?
Yeah, so the first notification went out 30 days ago, about 30 to 40 days. We give them 30 days, we go for the second notification, which will happen this week. There are a few lots that probably are more of a higher fire danger that um I physically will be contacting the property owner myself to just advise them with the fireworks coming up. Um, there's a few lots within the city that seem to burn every year. Every year, and this year, the grass is four feet tall, so we just want to make sure that we're not utilizing our public, you know, the public safety service to extinguish a fire when we have injuries. So it does put a strain, but the second notifications will go out this week.
Uh, yeah, perfect. Thank you. I just want to make sure that we're going to be done before.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I do have a question, your chair. I know that, well, my experience in, in, in the city is that people who have illegal fireworks usually wait until the show ends and then start either before or after. They want, they want people to hear their uh, is there, I know it's probably bullshit, but is there any way that you, that, that I remember that you, you mentioned the explorers. Is there any way that we can incorporate explorers so that you can have more people patrolling the city or
We've got
maybe form a committee and citizens that, that can uh drive around and
We, we've got explorers, going to have reserves, volunteers, we, everybody's going to, it's all hands on deck.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, I think the issue is what was shared before is, you know, it was difficult because I know we've gone through this, you know, for the last several years, every Fourth of July, we have this conversation. Um, but you're adding the health and safety codes, which is different than our municipal code and combined together, right?
Yes.
And so there was obviously that you have like, Mayor, for him said, you have to see them, and if you can't, if you don't see them, well, then you can't do anything, and that was always really difficult.
Yeah. And that's kind of why we remember the health and safety, because like I said, it has that, that restitution part in there. Um, and unfortunately, some folks, uh, they understand losing money, but they, uh, you know, to fight fees and penalties more than uh doing the right thing, so.
Yeah, no, we want everybody to be safe. You know, we want everybody to enjoy the Fourth of July and be safe and spend time with their family, but you know, obviously, we want to make sure that we curtail on a lot of those illegal fireworks that have been happening and just for people to be aware. On the, on the public education, I know we had talked about it a couple of years ago that we wanted to do, I mean, social media is, is obviously a big presence. But also, you know, at one time, Chief, we had talked about doing posters and, or putting some of those, you know, the illegal fireworks, you'll get, you'll get fined or, you know, and putting them on the storefronts, so that way people also can see that as, and some people may not have access to social media, but we will have it in our stores or in public places as well, like in our library, we're, you know. Um, but I think the stores in the corridor would be really important.
Yeah, we have a lot of flyers this year that we'll be posting, and, and actually Azus dropped a large amount uh for us to issue. So we will definitely get it out. I think this year you'll see much more of a presence on education, especially along Front Street and some of those that may not access social media.
Yeah.
But I agree, if, if it's in the public's eye on their doors, ask business owners to post it. For everyone, we can save, you know, that's one less call for us.
Perfect. And then just on the messaging, obviously, you know that, but Spanish to make sure those messages go out in Spanish as well.
Yeah, all of the social media we have is English and in Spanish, and then we're going to do a safety message tomorrow morning. I will give a safety message, and then Captain Artiago with Cal Fire is going to be one in Spanish for us.
Awesome. Great. Well, looking forward to that. So we'll be able to share with our public. Well, thank you so much and um we hope everybody enjoyed the great Fourth of July. Thank you. Okay, so we will move on. Cancel now onto our consent calendar at this time, and we have 13 items on our consent calendar. Let me take it out to the public first, if there's any numbers that the public has want to pull a consent calendar or an item from the consent calendar. Okay, see none, then I'll bring it to the council. If there's any council that wants to pull items from the consent calendar. Uh, yes, uh, Steve, please. Okay. C five, and I have. C four for comment, C five. C eight for comment and consent. So if, um, I undertake a motion to approve all other items with the exception of C four, C five, C eight and consent.
So move, or you need a?
Yeah, so I need to make the motion.
No, I will make the motion that we, um. Approve, uh, item C.
Oh, you, you could just say all other items?
All other items.
With the exception of?
The exception of, uh, C four, C five, C eight and C ten.
So I have a motion on the floor, is there a second? Second, okay, there's a second motion on the floor, first and a second, all in favor, say aye. Aye, any opposed? Okay, so motion carries, and I will do the first one, which is item C four. Um, and I'm just, this is more for, for common, I just wanna make sure that our residents understand. Uh, that this, there is a, we're approving the garbage collection and disposal rate, so just. For transparency, for our residents to know that there is gonna be increases, and it's only an increase in the CPI that's being. Requested for this, for this item, and it is part of the agreement. That the city entered into, uh, with Tri-Cities in regards to the disposal and the franchise. Uh, in, in the franchise agreement in regards to the disposal fee, so. Just to wanna make sure our residents do know that there, there will be an increase, but it's part of the annual CPI increase at a five point three percent. Um, and for the residential, which is more of the forty-eight gallons, that'll be a dollar fifty increase, right, on that, so. Um, just wanted to, to make that clear, and then also thank you, Tri-Cities always, um, you know. For trying to just increase CPI, and that's it, for our residents, really appreciate that. And then C five. I will turn it over to, uh, Councilwoman Correlo, then I have some comments on that one as well.
Um, first of all, I wanted to thank, uh, Pauline for sitting here in our audience for all her. Your, your work, obviously, and, and you know, again, this year when it comes to, to, uh, making sure that our community has a nice worth of July. Uh, festivities, so thank you for that. Um, I just had a, a, a couple of questions, I was reading the information, I mean, I know I have no such connection. Um, and I just wanted to see there was, um, I guess we were waiting on the, the insurance. And, uh, but I have the reinsurance certificate, and then, um. Also, I did see on there that, um, I think it said that the, um. Police department was not gonna be present there the whole time. And it, it is a, a large event that does, you know, attract a lot of our community, so I was just wondering if there's gonna be security. Just a couple of other questions.
Yeah, thank you for your questions, so at that time, um. During the time I wrote the staff report, um, we had not received the liability insurance, but we do have the liability insurance on file. Uh, regarding security, um, I did touch in with, uh, Chief Police, mentioning that we do oversee the, the event, um. And, uh, they'll be present if they need it, but in case there's other events, so be away from the event as needed.
Okay, awesome, and I'm looking forward to going and celebrating with you. Thank you. Yeah, thank, thank you, um, Councilwoman Correlo, mine is just. I think it's, uh, just a clarity, I know I saw that application, the application last time when it came before us, we did ask to remove. Um, and Chief, you gotta remind me on this, but I think it has the, the date of birth, height, hair color, eye color, and I think we said we don't need that, I mean, that's not. That what's required is part of this application process, so we can just remove that. From this application process, so we don't have it again, cuz it was, it, it did have that last time when we approved the application.
Yes, we'll make the modification that's through the special event permit that the police department uses. So, um, we can definitely make a new. Um, form in collaboration with the police department, and it just, uh, what, what you're requesting.
Yeah, it is, yeah, this seems more intrusive for what, what is needed, um. And then my, my other comment and request is, I know for, for many of us as city council members, we're there at different times. I think I would like, I would like to request a booth, Pauline, to have. Um, us or like a table, not a booth, but like a table, to be able to have, like, the council that arrives, if we wanna. You know, kind of meet and greet with the council members that are there, council, I would like to do that, and if the other council members would like to as well, if we can have a booth to be able to do that.
I work the crowd.
Yeah, I, I would like to do it, though, cuz I think there's a lot, I mean, there's a lot of opportunities, right, and a lot going on, so I think it's a good opportunity for council to be visible as well, so. Thank you, and then, um, so we'll move on to item C eight.
Well, Mayor, if I go back, when I order C five, do we wanna remove the approval for the, for the sausage, uh, of Ron Bell Romo's part? Do we need to do that?
Yeah, when you, when you actually, uh, all the consent items, it should be in modified form to remove that permit for the, uh, use of the, the Roman's part.
Thank you for that clarification. Okay, so we'll move on, um, to next item, which is item C dash, C dash eight. And that was, I pulled that one just for comment. Um, and this is in regards to the FD one fund, so I just, I, I had a question for a quick question on this one. I know that we are, we had approved the use of the Street Saver and Pavement Management Program, that was gonna give us the list of the. Approvals for the next five years in terms of the pay, the, the stroke, the roadway maintenance. So, are we utilizing that, is that data already available? In, in terms of the, uh, list of projects that we're gonna fund for the road repair and accountability under S P one?
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, so my name is Alan Fromm, so I'm used as an engineer here, uh, answering your question, uh, Mayor. Are we're working with P M Engineering Incorporated? They're essentially doing our Street Saver program, they're getting it up to, uh, updated standards, cuz even though we have information on there. You know, that not, they may not necessarily was like, was actually up there on the street, so they came out, they did a survey, and they're currently in the process of. Producing a project for the summer, or to provide, for this summer, so we can actually do some sort of road maintenance slash rehabilitation. And it'll produce, of course, the street names and street lists of all the streets that have been identified to, you know.
Awesome, thank you, thank you for that update, I just wanted to know, and then just my, my last comment is on timeline for completion of the project, so once you do have it. Um, just the timeline, I know we have a lot of infrastructure projects going on, so I just wanna make sure there's a timeline of completion, and then that. Then it's realistic, right, given the shortage of staff that we have, and given the tons of projects that we have, and they're major projects that. Whatever, the, whatever we're gonna do here, that it's realistic to be able to accomplish within the timeline. Thank you, those were all my comments. And then my last comment is on item C dash ten, um, and this is a resolution, I'm in need of contract for professional services with C S P for one year. Um, and this is not, not necessarily in terms of the contract, I know that it says that we're gonna go off to an R F P for next year. Because we had this contract in place for a long time. There were some rate increases, and I'm not sure if those eight rate increases were attributed to CPI. Or how were, were those rate increases, um, determined?
Yeah, it's, uh, so C S P, like big contractors, and annual increases to their hourly rates.
That was just based on their organization?
Yeah, so it's based on CPI, but how, how they. How they, in, you know, every year they increase their hourly rates, and it's based off, you know, CPI.
Okay, so they are using CPI, because it, uh, some of the rate increases were kind of off, there was a lot more. I don't know what percentage they were using.
Mayor, if I can add, um, what these, um, consultants do is they figure out their real cost, so it's not the CPI, they might have. You know, they provide benefits, so, just like our benefits significantly went up, I'm sure. Their health benefits, um, insurance and other things, and collectively, they. Use that to determine what their hourly rates are going to be, and so, a C S G doesn't always. Follow CPI exactly in terms of the cost increases.
Okay, yeah, that's what, uh, cuz some of them were, were more than the CPI increase.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that, that they roll in other, other than just the CPI. And then my last comment on this, um, is just, I know that obviously there's a lot more work we've. Approving a lot of contracts, or, or, um, planning. And we need a building inspector, I know we haven't had one for a while, so what are some of the? And this is just for future, is looking at the alternative costs of continuing with C S G or, or trying to hire a building inspector and. Uh, what have, what have been some of our, um. Efforts for, to initiate to hire a building inspector instead of continuing to contract a lot of these services, since we have so much. Infrastructure.
Yeah.
And commercial, and so, I guess I just wanna see at some point that we, we have a cost analysis. To be able to determine where we go in terms of the building official.
Yeah, the building official does the inspections, and so it, it's very good value, uh, that we're getting from, uh. Mr. McLean being here, the building official, so. Uh, some cities will have a building official, but also inspectors, so he wears both hats. And, uh, if there's more inspections that he can't handle, which is not common, he would ask for backup for building inspections, but. He, it's, it's always him.
Yeah, so we have the building official, but we don't have the building inspector.
He does it.
He does both.
Both.
For C S G.
Yes, you know it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I guess for my question, then, is there, is there any need for us to have someone in-house as opposed to continuing to contract with C E G? If it's more cost effective, then it's more cost effective, but. If there's an analysis of that.
Um, so, through the chair, um, yeah, we can take a look at it, and I'm generally speaking. The benefit and the reason why a lot of, I think, communities do use C S G is, um, you know, building permits can. All of a sudden be very high, and you don't have enough staff, or they can drop, you know, if there's a recession. And even, I know, in, in cities that are larger, they often actually still have someone like C S G to do, to help out with plan review. Because of volume, and it's also very difficult to find building officials right now, there's a, a real. Dirt of, um, building officials, but it's something we can definitely explore.
Thank you, those are my comments, so thank you. Okay, Council, so then, um, we, I'll undertake a motion to approve item. C dash four, C dash five with modifications, C dash eight and C dash ten. Yeah. First and a second on the floor, all in favor, say aye. Aye, any opposed? Okay, so motion carries. Thank you, so we'll move on now to our next item on our agenda, which is our business item, we have four of those today, we'll start with. Business item B dash one, Resolution Number Fifty-nine sixty-seven, Resolution of the City Council, the City of Sodda, approving the Masterpiece Schedule for fiscal year twenty 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 twenty-four.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Um, this is our annual revisit of our fee for services, or what we call our Masterpiece Schedule. This was the adoption of the fees that we charge for all of our services. Um, from making photocopies to police reports, for our impact fees, for, for building permits, the whole gamut of everything that we have. Um, in. Two thousand and seventeen, we engaged the services in Willdown, and in two thousand and eighteen, the council approved that. Um. That study that was done with all of the analytics and the staffing that we had at that time. Since the adoption of, of that program, we have been increasing by CPI. On an annual basis, until such time, usually about five, six years or so. We then perform another study to make sure that we're still recouping the actual cost of our staffing and those types of things. So this year, um, we use the April, um, CPI number, the April CPI is four point one nine percent. And so, all fees that are related and tied to CPI have been increased by four point one, one nine percent. Um, the impact fees have been increased by our, as stated in our ordinance, by the construction, um, index. And the only. The only significant change to the Masterpiece Schedule this year is the change to the yard garage, for the yard sale permits. Changing that from two to four per year and reducing the cost to fifteen dollars. Other than that, everything else has remained the same, and there are no new costs or no new fees added to the Masterpiece Schedule. With that, that concludes my presentation, uh, were there any questions?
Thank you, Mike. Um, now, so if there's any, let me ask first if there, you guys have any questions?
No questions.
No questions? Okay, um, comments, so, uh, well, let me go to the, to, um. I have a question, uh, before we go out and comment, so, but, so there is another new permit, because it can carry concealed weapon. Is that a hundred and sixty-nine? Um, so that, that's as new next to a new permit, we didn't have it before, under concealed carry fees, under the police, police fee?
That's a typo on my part, it was new last year, I didn't remove the new for this year, so.
Okay.
I apologize.
So, I've got it, so we only have one then on this one.
Nothing new, it was only the one, the one change that was made. The changing of the number and the, the price.
Okay, got it, okay, thank you, so then let me take it out to the public, if there's any comments or questions from the public. Okay, I see none, then I'll bring it back for comments from the council before, uh, we move. For approval. Or not approval.
Just a very quick comment, the chair is, uh, again, we're just raising by the CPI four point. Uh, ninety-one percent, and I think for the public, they understand that it's reasonable. Um, you know, whether you go to a restaurant and you go wherever, and you see the prices increase, and this is slightly increased, so. Um, at the point that, that we have the increase, um, we'd like to cut them like the, the broad sale permits, but, um, you know. We also have to keep the business running, and, um, it physically sounds like. Thank you again, Mike, for your effort and putting this together and keeping it within reason, so. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you for, for stating that, um, Mayor Pro Tem. Any other comments?
None.
Mike, I have the, just the comment on the abatement administrative fee, so. For the absentee landlords, that, that's under for enforcement, that applies to absentee. Do we send those, uh, letters to absentee landlords or landlords who are violating the health and safety codes? Is a part of what, a hundred and?
I'm.
Twenty percent.
The chief? For the code enforcement?
So that also includes, and my only question is, it also includes, it also includes the landlords that are, that violate health and safety codes? That a payment administrative fee.
Under the code enforcement?
Okay.
There's the abatement administrative fee.
Okay.
And that's a twenty percent of actual cost of contract, does that also include the landlords, any landlords that, um. Violate health and safety codes?
Uh, well, anything of pavement related is gonna be, uh, figured into whatever that, that.
That twenty percent is?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Council, there's no, um, questions for Mike, again, Mike, thank you for putting this together. I'm just, you know, again, it is an increase, so I know when we do the Masterpiece Schedule, and then. You know, then we get people coming in later to tell us, but why didn't we, why didn't we increase it? So, just for the public, this is the opportunity that we have to be able to have the public come and comment on any of these fees, it's. Based on, just as was said on CPI, and it has to be increased based on those service, cost of services, so. Okay, Council, if there is no other comments, then I'll undertake a motion to approve item B dash one.
One more. Do you want me to read it, or just?
No. Dash one, okay. Okay. Comment, I'm sorry. I did, I think I did, I did public comment.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, we had no public comment. Okay, so I have a motion on the floor, and a second, all in favor, say aye. Aye, any opposed? Okay, so motion carries. So we'll move on to next item on our agenda, which is item B dash two, see Sodda Police Department A B forty-one, annual report and provide direction.
Okay, Council, uh, per Assembly Bill Forty-one, the City Council was compelled last year to, uh, adopt an ordinance approving policies. Applicable to the police department's use and possession of military equipment. After adopting of an ordinance of this type, the, uh, city's police department is charged with preparing an annual report concerning the previous year's use. If any of the military equipment, and to make that report available for the council and public comment. The report's then going to be used by the council as part of its annual review and renewal of the city's military equipment use policy ordinance. And we have scheduled that to, uh, appear on the council's agenda of July nineteenth of two thousand twenty-three. Essentially, the annual report contains information about what equipment the, uh, police department has, what military equipment. How the equipment was used, complaints or concerns that may have been received about the use of the equipment, and any associated costs related to the equipment. Um. The, uh, city is also, uh. The uh city is also uh required to post the annual report on its website for the public so that they can uh take a look at it as well. Within thirty days, the report uh is required uh with Ruth, sorry about this, within thirty days of submitting the report. Uh the law enforcement agency is required to hold at least one well-publicized hearing um at a general public. And so the general public as well as the council may ask questions and so forth regarding the uh the report. Um the city plans to hold this meeting as part of its regular city council meeting again on July nineteen, two thousand twenty three. So before um you will look at this issue, whether or not you should renew the ordinance that we have in place. We'll have the opportunity to have the public and the council to comment on the uh the annual report that has been prepared. So no action is actually required tonight other than for the city council to receive and accept the report. To direct the staff to post the uh report, the annual report on the city's website. And then to direct that the staff take adequate measures to publicize the fact that we will be having a uh public hearing on the annual report. At the meeting of the city council on July nineteen. There, I I should note that uh you'll you'll see the the report is attached very short. Because there has been virtually no change from what was uh done, uh what the city was in possession and what they had use of. Um in the uh when the ordinance was adopted last year. So we haven't acquired any new equipment. We haven't dispensed with any of the equipment that we have. I spoke to the chief briefly uh today about the ammunition issue and he said that I think that we uh. Used one box of ammunition for target practice and then swapped in and uh you know, replacement ammunition. But otherwise, there has been no use of the equipment that's listed on the annual report.
Yeah, thank you, Mike, for that. And then we um open it up for the council then if there's any questions at this point. Okay.
Just one, how many right?
Um. If you look at the uh the annual report, um.
Thirteen.
For thirteen, yeah, the uh, yeah, the commando and then uh. Sid nine or something like that, I think of the other. I don't know, this is just the uh, the. Yeah, I'm sorry. So we have seven thousand five hundred and fifty nine rounds and then we have thirteen of these uh uh rifles.
Okay, so let me uh any any questions or comments from the public? Okay, see none, then um we received the report. There's no action that needs to be taken. We received a report, direct staff to. Um publicize and the publicize the public hearing that's scheduled for July nineteenth at our next city council meeting.
There's a consensus that that's a direction provided stem, yeah. And we will post this then within the next couple of days. We actually have a uh a section on the uh city's website specifically for this military equipment policy. Where the entire policy is posted for the public to review as well, but we'll post the annual report and notify everybody that we're gonna have this hearing then on the nineteenth.
Okay, thank you. And is it easily in a location where people can easily find it?
I think so, yeah. I um I'll I'll double check and I'll I'll communicate with Stephen and the chief. But I think that, yeah, last year we didn't have any complaints about people not being able to have access to it because there was folks that were definitely interested in the adoption of the policy.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Well, thank you for that. So then we'll move on um. To our next item on our agenda, which is B dash three ordinance number seven six two and ordinance of the city council, the city of Saldan amending chapter five point three two. Garage sales of title five business tax taxes license and regulations of the Saldan municipal code. And so I will turn this over to you, Mike, as well.
Yeah, you had a a full staff report on this item at the uh the last meeting and this is the follow up. You introduced the ordinance at the meeting on uh June seventh and so it is before you this evening for consideration of adoption. Mike actually took away the uh the thunder in terms of what the ordinance will do when he uh discussed the master fee schedule. Um the intent was to have the city be able to set the garage permit fee as part of the master fee schedule. And that um has already been incorporated into the master fee schedule. The the fee has been reduced from thirty one dollars and fifty cents to fifteen dollars per the council's direction. We also have uh made changes to the uh code section having to do with garage sales to allow for as opposed to to garage sales. On an annual basis. So those are the only real changes that were made in the ordinance. You can see it's still in uh underlying and strikeout uh format as attached to the agenda. But the changes were minimal, but um we're hoping that the folks who have requested the changes as well as the council is satisfied. With the increased number of broad sales and the reduction in the fee for the permits.
Yeah.
So it is before you this evening for a consideration of adoption, a waiver of reading and reading by title only. And so we, this is a notice public hearing, so you need to open the hearing and receive any comment.
Okay, so. I am, okay, so we don't have it here, so. I'm gonna in the public hearing for any public comments. Okay, and I don't see, let me just double check. Okay, so there is. No comments. I don't see any hands raised on Zoom. Okay, so then I will close the public hearing. There's no public comment. And I will bring it back to the council for. Waiting of the reading and adoption.
Yeah, motion to adopt wave reading and read by title only. We've already actually read the uh title when with the item was introduced.
So.
So motion to adopt. Okay, so I have a uh motion on the floor.
Second.
And a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, motion carries. And I just wanna say thank you so much, um Mike, for working on this really expeditious me and bringing it back to us. So they can, you know, be modified as part of our municipal code. So thank you to um council, thank you to Mayor Potam, um Jimenez also for pushing this. And thank you for all of the community input that we received in regards to the garage sales. So we're um excited to move forward.
To the chair, I have a a a question. Um. I I know I have been getting people asking about the um annual uh city wide yard sale that we have. Um and so I was just uh wanting to know is that something that we're gonna do again this year?
I think so. Provide us some more information on that. Yeah, I know we did do it.
We did it last year. Uh, we definitely could this year. Um I can talk with city manager, we can do something else.
Okay, awesome, thank you. Okay, so we'll move on to our next item, which is B dash four, then resolution. Uh fifty nine sixty eight, a resolution of the city council, the city of Saldan, authorizing the city manager to execute agreements with the organization deemed eligible. Under the mini grant program and I will turn this over to um our community development manager, Jesús.
And on record, community engagement. Um, well, good evening, uh mayor, council members. So we bring this back to you. Uh this were your final consideration. Uh we definitely have to acknowledge that this was a learning process, trying to balance. Uh making it as easy as possible for nonprofits that don't often qualify for the bigger grants. Uh to be able to apply while at the same time making it a good system that will be as transparent as possible. So that residents know where their tacticals are going. So um you know, per the report, we received eight applications um after we did four information sessions. Not all of the organizations that attended the information sessions applied for whatever reason. Um out of those eight, uh there were six that were, you know, uh a hundred percent met the criteria. Um but just given the lack of of infrastructure that had been in place, um. It is probably for the best interest to approve the the eight uh applications um. Set here right um in in this recommendation. And after this, um I will work with the city manager to uh finalize an agreement that will support. The nonprofits, but also make sure that they work, they complete the work that they set out to do in a manner that, you know, as I mentioned. Is as transparent as possible for the residents. But this time that is on my recommendation. I know that uh that would be a total of forty five thousand of the fifty thousand um. What about it?
Nine. Nine.
Ah, sorry.
My application. Sorry. Okay, thank, thank you, Jesús. So um. Now I'll bring it to the council for questions and then I'll take it out to the public for any comments and then bring it back. So um council, any comments or questions?
I have a couple.
Okay.
Or no. I I thought. Well, I have in my mind that this was uh specifically for nonprofit organizations that were. Uh located in Solida.
No, uh the the proposal was brought um to meetings uh or prior to meetings were doing work in Solida. Um was the main criteria. And so I believe that that recommendation came about after venue boards of trying to figure out. You know, do we limit it to the number of nonprofits that are here or nonprofits such as, for example, Moira de Selección. That are technically based in Salinas, but they do a lot of work.
But they have a lot of.
Correct, so that's uh so the. Recommendation that was approved was organizations that do work within city limits.
Okay, because um I mean. Uh for the second agency of the first agency is far, uh I mean, yes. Didn't we just approve uh contract with them for forty thousand dollars? Couple um about a month ago or so. Is is it, is this organization that uh serves uh?
So that was, that was a different one.
Okay, ah, okay.
Yeah. Yeah.
And then the other one, there's. The National Hispanic Organization, they don't have a chapter in Solida. Do they work? And this is, this is the thing that that is starting to do. Of key, yes. Isn't um if you do work, do work in Solida. Uh but you provide, I don't feel comfortable giving money to an organization that will give scholarships on under the name. So if we're gonna do that, I rather the council give those scholarships. So that we can make sure that that we're providing those scholarships for our students. There's that. What kind of work are they doing? Just gathering a couple of day and nights before and 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 reviewing the the. The scholarships uh applications, that is not actually work, right? I mean. You know what I mean? Because I know that Muheres Nation does a lot of work, does a lot of organizing with it. But Muheres uh helps a lot of women and and families. But I, when when you compare that organization job in Solida with providing another scholarship. I mean. I don't know, I maybe I don't see much of that the the work and that's why I'm having an issue with that. That when somebody's providing, uh is you the the scholarship gonna be under the name or under the council's name? And if it's gonna be under the name, well, I rather give it directly to the students.
And thank you, members. So on that particular organization, I share your expertise, especially since that is not in their scope. Nevertheless, you know, they met the, you know, group criteria, which is why it is coming to this step now um. The process does allow council to have the final vote on which organization to fund.
Um so through the chair, just, I think the thing that we were very challenged with. Is that there wasn't a lot of criteria. There was no evaluation process. There was no rating and ranking. Um situation, so it's very hard to say that this organization. Um doesn't quite meet the criteria where there might be others um similar. And so we felt that the best option was to not distinguish between the applicants as long as they met the. The very basic criteria that was um submitted with the application. And then um to monitor them this year to make sure that they're in indeed. Um needing the requirements and of course, um. You know, it is up to council, but I I did wanna let you know that my hesitation is to make sure that we're we're being. Fair to all, all applicants.
Yeah, th- thank you for that. I would have liked to have seen the applications as part of our packet. Because I, the same similar, I I don't know what the scholarships are for. I know the organization, but I don't know what what the scholarships are for, what criteria, what eligibility, what it's going to. I mean, that's just really vague for me as well, but I'll make my comments. I'm gonna move it this way to council.
Um yes, um I was gonna share similar comments. As you know, I I uh emailed today, this afternoon. Asking for the applications. I think for any of us up here, it's hard to make a decision when we don't see the whole scope of work. Um one example I'll give, I don't recall which organization it was, and we had an opportunity to see one applicant, but they had mentioned that they wanted to do art. Um and so in my head, I'm, and they said in the summer, very specific. Um and so in my head, I'm thinking, well, we have our Solida Community Center that offers art classes. They do a sketching class and they also do a painting class. Like, do we wanna give our, you know, do we wanna fund that and then have them compete with our? Solida uh Community Center um classes that are being offered offered there. Um so again, you know, I I think um the application should have been sent so that we could be able to to learn more and make a decision. Um. I'm saying a thing for House. Also, you know, I'm just uh curious on those people that that did show up, the organizations that did show up, but then didn't apply. There was any outreach done to them to kind of see like, hey, what, you know, what is stopping you? You know, if they're startup nonprofits, they might not have the administrative people. Um or they might not have the know-how of how to apply, even though to us it seems like a simple application. It's not to everybody. Um and I I was gonna say with that said, I think I really um for me personally, I would like to see maybe maybe more outreach. Maybe extend it a little bit more if we can, maybe another month, see if we could get more more people uh interested. I know, I think I read somewhere that the cheerleaders um missed a good one.
Correct.
I believe just by a little bit.
No.
Uh, yeah, I I know that those cheerleader uniforms and and just everything that they do is very expensive. Um for some families, I know everyone's able to afford, afford that. So that's for me, I I don't know that I feel comfortable honestly making a decision without being able to to review and be fair to everyone. The applicant, every application.
Um, thank you, the chair. Um just, I think there needs to be kind of a conclusion on this. Process before reopening it up. Um there may be additional money and we we could do additional outreach, but I would suggest, you know. If you need more time, it could be continued to the next meeting, but um that we can't really extend the time until we close the process out.
The chair, um actually, we can. We we can kind of an agreement about how much money we're gonna give out. And if we find that there's a need to extend it to get to have more of a community outreach, as stated by our, his sort of community. Um engagement uh manager, um love the infrastructure wasn't in place, so um. We can still do that. Um one of the things and one of the goals of this uh mini grants for myself was I saw an opportunity to help. Those nonprofit organizations that have a tough time raising money, not ones that are receiving funding from other other areas. But those that are are here locally and are having a difficult time raising money. So therefore, um now they same old same one, you know, you raise the garbage trees and they go, you know, how come you didn't tell us? We already had the meeting. How come you didn't tell us, you guys, we could get a mini grant? So what was on? Because, you know, it was on our social page, it was on the website. And so understanding that and understanding this this council, how we make every effort to to uh uh ensure that we're reaching all the community out there. I think that uh we can um continue uh to reach out and hold up. Um because if we get more, then it may be determined how much money we do give out to each of the organization. Do each of them need five thousand? You know, I'm sure that all of that by thousand, I'm sure. So therefore, we may not give the whole five thousand. We may be able to help more organizations, organizations and give a thousand five hundred, twenty five hundred in that type of manner. But for myself, uh the chairs, I'd like to see us uh do continue outreach, do another thirty days. And come back and see or see how many more other organizations we have, especially um ones I'm looking at as. Ones uh of here and in Solida, so um.
I did wanna check with the city attorney and then also make sure that um maybe there's more specific criteria. Because the criteria that exists is not very. Yeah, so.
Yeah, no, thank you, thank you, Mayor Potam. And we can check with Mike to see if we can do that, but I I don't. I mean, my my comment is different. I wouldn't wanna go back and open it up again. I mean, there was deadlines there and deadlines that were met. I think for me, it's important to go back and look at the criteria because I know that we talked about this extensively.
Several meetings, it, you know, took, I mean, I think. Maybe even like since over a year ago, trying to bring this back and try and figure out. What what is it that we want? And I know that all of us talked about, as Mayor Blotem said, we wanted it to be neighborhood driven, we wanted it to meet a community need. Right? So for me, without seeing the application, it's hard because I wanna read, but what is it that they're gonna be doing? What is it that they wrote in terms of how did they figure out this is a community need? And to be able to determine, is it is it doesn't meet, you know, a community need, these are public dollars, and I think for me, it's fifty thousand dollars of public funding. And we wanted this for a purpose, but I don't, I'm not interested in in scholarships or stipends or any of that because. We already have our community center, like Councilwoman Cora Lejo said, and we've been saying that. We need those scholarships for those families that don't have multiple kids and can't put their kids in all of those programs and services that we're. Providing, so how do we make sure that they get those scholarships to be able to support them? So if this is, you know, my. I I'm not, I mean, this is the scholarship was more, I mean, you know. I'm not interested in that, I think the concept was, how do we really support our neighborhood groups that wanna do something, that wanna meet a need, that wanna have an event, that want to. Do something that's different because they don't receive money, they can't do it, so how do we support them with this effort? Um and so when I see the scholarships and I see the foundations here. As well as the foundations typically are created to be able to fundraise to, you know, get money. And so this was not the intent for people to fundraise off of the public dollars. More for neighborhoods and our communities to really take advantage of. What is the needs that they wanna see and how can we really stimulate more civic engagement, but also how can we? You know, support some of these community groups that wanna do stuff and they just don't have the money um to do it. And so, I mean, although, you know, respective organizations that are here, but I just, you know, I'm, i- it's just really difficult. Um for some of these, for me, to be able to approve something tonight without reading the application process. And I want to en- encourage the council on how we do come back, Megan, because I think we do have to have really. Uh clear criteria of what are we looking for in terms of the the nonprofits, what kind of of, you know. Elegibility is required in terms of what projects are gonna be funded and what projects is a council interested in in funding, at least having some. Framework, so that way it's easier when the people are applying as well, so they know like, does it, does it fit in or does it not, right? Um, so just so that way it could be more clear, I think, I I know we've talked about it extensively and I just, you know, I. Didn't gather my notes to come back and say, hey, these are the things that we talked about. You know, but I know that we did say we wanted to be neighborhood driven, we wanted to meet a specific need in the community. Um, but yeah, I mean, I I'm glad that this is happening and thank you for the work um. That was done to really do the workshops, because we did the workshops, and I think for me, it's fair, look, if we did the workshops. We announced it, people didn't apply, that's gonna happen everywhere, I'm not interested. I mean, this is a council decision, but I would not support opening it up again to uh, you know, to gather more applications. I want us to really talk about what are the criteria that we're looking at and what are the projects that we that we said we wanted to fund.
Through the chair, I I would like to say that I I rather do the measuring twice and cut once, that just coming up. I'm pushing it just because it is the end of the fiscal year. And I do, I do strongly believe that this should be directed to local community um organizations. Um it's not that I have any any anything against the that communities that provide some services for that, it is that. I know that there is many small organizations that are struggling even to raise uh some money for their own existence. And that is that, that is the the um, the place where I would like to see this money go. And rather than going for a foundation, and again, I'm not against the foundation, but I'm just. Um comparing the efforts of the small organizations that are trying to survive with. Uh well-established organization that can continuously raise funds for their purpose, and when it comes to scholarships. I I do belong to a few organizations that provide scholarships and it is la- um labor intensive because you have to be. You have to read, you have to go through the um applications and everything, but at the end. Uh those scholarships are not gonna take the unable to see constantly, so the the. Um we don't know exactly where they're going, we don't know. You know what I mean? So I would like to see this money going to residents, to organizations, to local organizations that provide service for our residents.
So through the through the chair, can I just ask the city attorney um if it would be better to. If we were looking at new criteria to reject the slate and come back with some criteria.
That's actually what my, because it sounds to me as if there's a couple of different issues, but the um, yeah, I think that. You know, we were talking about awarding them all because we didn't have explicit criteria and we'd wanna be careful that we weren't accused of. Discriminating against one group or another. Now, it sounds like we're hearing that maybe the fact that we didn't have criteria in place, we may. Be faced with uh approving mini grants to organizations that that some of the council members feel. May not be worthy, we don't have the application, so you weren't able to see, so my recommendation would be to uh reject the entire slate. Work on establishing the criteria that the council all agrees to and start the process all over again, so that you can then receive a new. New set of applications and folks that will know that they won't be able to meet that criteria, won't bother submitting a new application and so forth, but. To try to go back now and establish criteria that we would apply to this group, I think would be unfair, so probably best, I mean, I I realize that that's. And you know, it's it's uh the measure twice uh. Uh got one sort of back, it makes sense that you sort of say like, this is a new program. Um and we don't wanna do something that we think is uh that you don't feel is is correct under the circumstances and so forth, so it makes more sense. No harm, no foul in terms of, yes, somebody went to the effort of applying, but there was no guarantee that anybody that applied was actually gonna receive. A mini grant to begin with, so I think the best thing is to start a level playing field again. After you folks have a discussion of what the criteria would be that we would apply to the mini grants, and then we will ask folks that are interested to reapply. And then you bring it back to you.
And I I think even if we shared the applications with you, they wouldn't have been too illuminating because the application itself. Was really, it was very basic and probably didn't get to the detail that you would want to evaluate, so I think we can come back with a much. Better process, application and rating and ranking um. Process by which you can see how they they rate against the criteria.
Right.
Yeah, so.
I'm just saying, through through the chair, um just a question for Mike, is there any uh specifically legal word uh warning that you think we should add on the? Notification that Jesus is gonna be sending to this dispatch about booking?
Illegal warning about what?
Not not warning, warning, legal warning.
Oh, in terms of, yeah, I mean, I think we need to come up with a a uniform message that we send to everybody that says. Upon consideration, the council decided that perhaps criteria were was not clear enough, um and that there was some concern about uh. Public outreach and so forth, and I'm saying the fact that it looks like there was, you know, more informational sessions and so forth, but. There was just this feeling that there was uh that perhaps uh there were some increased public outreach, but the criteria really, as far as I'm concerned, is the driver here because. Um yeah, but we'll come up with some uniform language that we will send to everybody, that make sure that they understand that none of them, the rejection doesn't represent. Um a rejection of any of the applications in terms of, you know. Uh what they applied for, what they thought they were applying for, it was based on the merits, was basically an issue of process and that we think that we needed to go back and correct the process. And ensure that we award the mini grants properly, so yeah, I I can work with the city manager and Jesus to come up with something, yeah.
Yeah, thank you, Mike, and tha- thank you, Jesus, because I know you put it together and I I. Totally remember that we had discussions on it and I know we didn't. So I, you know, I think for the council, when we come back to have this discussion, that we're really clear that we have real specific. Priorities, this is the criteria, this is what we're looking at, so that way there's no, you know, there is no confusion or miscommunication and then. As the process continues and that there's a real clear for us and then also for our applicants, right? So that way there's no vagueness, so I appreciate that, thank you so much. I rather, you know, it's public dollars, so we have to be very vigilant, so I'd rather make sure that we spend public dollars. You know, um really addressing some of the needs of our community and with really clear criteria and transparency.
So just so steps, you want us to go ahead and agendaize this to bring it back to you for purposes of establishing what the criteria will be for the mini grants?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we need to be clear on what the criteria is gonna be.
We do, we need a person to basically reject the entire slate of applications on on the basis of process and not merit, right?
So we have first and a second and um a motion on the floor, all in favor, say aye, aye, any opposed? Okay, so the motion carries, and I just wanna say thank you to all the applicants, because as was said, it's not about them, I think it's. We need to be clear on what that criteria is gonna be, and so we we're we'll get there, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, council, so we'll move on to our next item on our agenda. Um, and yeah, we still have our city reports and then our council member announcements and records, so. Uh I just have a few a few items, um on the seventh, I did meet with Robert Key from Monterey County Convention Visitor Bureau along with. Uh Mayor LaBarre, uh so as was mentioned, I sit on their advisory board, I don't have a voting uh vo- voice. Uh but they, and the two mayors from South County is Mayor DeMar and myself, so the the proposal was. That there there's a change to the board of of directors and that we get a seat at the table to be able to have a voting member from South County. Um and still keep an advisory seat, so the voting member would be uh someone from the turret, from the um restaurant industry or tourism industry. Um so that way that person, they have some elected officials and and the elected officials can serve on the board. So they're really looking at a South County representative that does have a vote on that MCCDB. So Mayor LaBarre and I have discussed different possibilities of who uh from South County would would be eligible. One potential is um the Plaza, La Plaza, because there are so many of them across South County and. Sheen if one of them uh would be able to or interested in participating as a voting member. Um so there is requirements to that, but so I've also reached out to see if there's anyone that um our economic development director, Megan. Feel like someone that we can nominate from 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 solid. Um so more to come on that, I'll give I'll give you more updates once we have um, once we have the final. And then on the tenth, I attended the solid that high school graduation, so again, congratulations to all the graduates now on summer. I'm enjoying their summer or summer school, and on sixth fall, I attended the MST Board of Directors meeting. Uh so just some highlights from there, we received a report on the Monterey County Emergency Operations Center. Uh the winter storms and the response um that MST was part of along with the county, and we did receive a recognition. From Monterey County Board of Supervisors, Supervisor Alejo presented the award um to the CEO. Um and they continue, MST continues to support the residents of Baharo with free ridership. And then we also had a public meeting on the fiscal year twenty four and twenty five operating capital budget. Um and approval of the resolution to be able to submit for federal grant applications and to apply for Tamsi. Under the Transportation Development Act, Local Transportation Fund, and also to apply for state transit. Assistance for fiscal year twenty twenty four, um and just so the council knows, also MST did sponsor a bill this year with Senator Laird, which is SP three oh four. Um and that the bill, what it does, it increases the procurement threshold for simple acquisitions of service supplies and materials and equipment. And so that is currently on the assembly floor, um and then they're also monitoring the state, obviously the state budget, there is an increase in the state transit assistance program to. Uh one point nine billion for twenty twenty three, twenty four, and we'll see, you know, we're still waiting for the governor to sign the budget, the budget. Um, and then on six thirteen, uh participated in the pride. Live raising ceremony with the center and Salinas Valley Pride, so I just wanna thank all the community members that that came out, spoke about the need to be inclusive. Um in our communities, and then on the fourteenth, attended the special city council meeting. And then on the twenty first today, I attended a four hundred bigged community relations executive board meeting in King City. And so I I do have some announcement from them, and I thought this was really um great, so four hundred they get has a lot of activities, which I learned about. Um and they're doing, um they have so many things that they offer and they're really trying to reach out to the local communities, they work really closely with King City and. Passarobles because they're like in the middle of them, but they're also wanting to extend their services or their. Uh partnership with the South County City, so they provided, you know, um. They have a day where I thought it was good for our NJROTC to uh participate in one of their events where they have a soldier, they could be a soldier for a day. And so uh King City has done that with them, so opportunities for us. And they uh to participate with them, they also have a job fair, um they work with Monterey County Workforce Development Board, they had employee townhouse. Um they working on a micro gift project, they're also looking of doing a full-scale exercise. Um at four hundred they get kind of simulating a six point eight earthquake. And so they're looking at the partnerships and how do you activate that in um, you know, asking, oh, the partners also to be part of that. Um and they they meet quarterly, and so the next meeting is in September, so I would like to recommend to see if there's a way. That solid that can host the meeting here, just to be able to start more uh communication and partnerships with four hundred they get. And some of their efforts, they also provide us with services, so I mean, we can also have, they can come to our parades and our events. They have a color guard as well, so if we need them for any of our um events that we have, they're open to that as well, so I thought that was a really good. I didn't know all of the different resources they had, and they also had some flyers that they wanted me to. Um show our community, which is they're having a Fourth of July event as well, but there is is on July first on a Saturday. Um and they welcome our community, it's from four to ten, it's on their grounds, you don't have to, you don't have to have clearance, you can go, it's five dollar admissions for adults and. Children fight and under a tree, but they're gonna have live music, entertainment, food, drinks, so. Um I think it's great to be able to have different opportunities for our community to go and celebrate Fourth of July and really enjoy the fireworks show and other festivities, so. I'll pass it to the council too, if you guys are interested in taking a picture, they gave me some flyers for that. Um and that's all, that's all I have on my report, so I'll turn it over to council member um Cora.
Um yes, I just have one, I volunteered at the Sopa Grad um for that high school three years and that was. Uh very fun, very energetic, um and then I just wanted to um. I guess report on them that I did not attend, which was the um the pride flag. And I just uh wanted to say that I am very proud that, you know, again this year for the second year in a row. Um that, you know, we are this way unique here at City Hall, unfortunately, I wasn't able to attend because I was out of out of state. Um actually, but I just uh want to reiterate that it's important, I believe, to all of us here on the council to be inclusive. And we definitely want all our visitors, um tourists, and especially our our residents to to feel safe. So, that's all I have.
Thank you, it's miracle, Ken.
Uh just uh one item, I attended the Simmons Valley Waste Authority meeting uh last week, it was thirty three. Um just basically is uh we got a presentation on uh in RSB nine sixty three. Uh regarding the multi-unit uh. Uh disposal, that's gonna be happening, and we talked about it earlier, um and then the month of July, we're off, so that's really nice. That's all I have.
Okay, so we'll go to next item to the council member announcement.
Okay, so I just wanna mention that I was at the uh recital uh pride club and. We had a lot more people than we had the the previous year, and a lot of people participated, and I also participated, I attended the. Um the graduation was especially significant for me because my my daughter graduated. But it was a beautiful event, and I saw that um, well, I overheard um one of the parents saying that it will be a good idea to have. A couple of uh big screens so that the parents that are on the on the. On 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 the stage and can see their child when they actually, because when they they go and actually see and get their their um. Their diploma, then the the parents don't actually see them because it's so far away, so maybe um. We can coordinate something with them, so we can help them get a couple of uh. Uh some big screens so that students can see it, and then um. The other thing that I wanted to mention is that maybe we could uh find um one of you to be an alternative or call. But with solid historical study, I had an emergency on the on the meeting they had, and I couldn't attend, and then. I will not be here for the for the meeting of July, so I will need somebody that that looking. for the meeting of July, so I will need somebody that that we can help each other.
Yeah, so I thought we had designated an afternoon, maybe we didn't, okay, I said that we assigned someone, okay, do you, are you uh are you interested in being that afternoon?
Um I am, Mr. Stiles, good job.
So, uh Miracle Town, can we, do we need to make an appointment, do we, can we just recommend it, I mean, we have a forum now that we um recommend that Councilwoman Corralo be the alternate? Yeah, Mike, do we need to make a motion, we're going?
I think that you you would make that appointment and we just need the consensus of, so.
We got consensus?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. That's it? Okay, thank you, then we'll go on to council member announcements and reports, so I will start with Miracle Town.
Uh praises or?
Oh, sorry, praises, yes.
Um, I like to recognize the title of the graduates, um and it's not just, you know, minor thing that graduating, uh it's it's awesome that they're moving on. But one in particular, one of the high school seniors, Eric Segura. Um Eric uh is uh one of our athletes there at Solid Ed High. Who said that a a scholarship at Oregon State University, Oregon State University also participated in the regional playoffs for the Polish War Series, those of you that are interested in that. In that, it's on T, it's on TV now on ESPN, put a little plug in there. But in addition to that, he got invited to the Major League Baseball Combine, and what that is, it's held on June twentieth through the twenty-fifth. Only a hundred and thirty-one high school baseball players are invited to the uh Combine, the rest come on from college um that are eligible um for the Combine, and that's before all the the major clubs there, so there's a possibility that if Eric does well, hopefully he does well, and that's in Arizona. Um he may be looking at an opportunity to play professional ball, but if not, nonetheless, he can still get his education at uh Oregon State University, so um kudos to him and his family, Efrain and his wife, um you know, they're the ones driving them to all the camps and the summer stuff and all that good stuff, uh to the whole family, congratulations.
Yeah, congratulations, yeah. Thank you, thank you for those praises, uh Councilman Corralo.
Um, yes, it's it's, I actually have the Segura family also on here, just wanted to give them praises, um I went to school with Eric's dad, um Efrain Segura, since kindergarten, since kindergarten, so um you know, their mother's wife are are very dedicated uh parents and very passionate about supporting the party of the children, so just wanted to um congratulate them and congratulate Eric on all his accomplishments. Um and also just wanted to uh give praises to all the nonprofits that submitted their applications um for the mini-grant, just wanted to thank you for everything that that you're doing for our community and also for just your passion that that you have. Um, and that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. And
Nah, no, not this time.
No.
Uh, well, actually, uh the one of the the comments that I made last time is that uh we we have a lot of people graduating, we have even uh uh outside that graduation, there was a Bamba right there. They waited for the person that graduated and uh I could hear a lot of parties around, but I want to thank all the parents that have parties that ended exactly at ten, except for one. But he was pretty pretty calm after that, and I think he was a a show of responsibility from our community. So thank you for that, and uh hopefully we'll continue on that way, and we don't see that much distractions on the Fourth of July.
Yeah, thanks, thank you. Um and I'll just, I I have to, uh one is, I want also just uh praise Anissa Martinez, who also graduated um this year, and she also helps me with some of my mayor staff um. And she was at, she's actually a junior, she graduated a whole year early, so it was pretty amazing to see that these kids have these opportunities that are pretty amazing to be able to graduate a whole year early, um so I thought that was really, that was really awesome, so Anissa, congratulations on your effort for doing everything you needed to do to be able to graduate a whole year early as a junior from high school. Um and I also want to praise um um Rancho Cielo, and I know they have many of their students that come from South County and also from Solid Ed. They were um nominated, they're one of fifteen teams that were chosen to compete in Orange County to win um to get grant of a hundred thousand dollars toward construction of a modular home. So they're building this amazing modular home that's sustainable, they're part of the Orange County Sustainability Decoathon. And so they're gonna go stay over there for a month, build this home, and it's all like energy efficient and, you know, has all the bells and whistles, they're gonna bring it back. Um and then hopefully they win, but they'll bring it back and then it'll be on site for one of their staff members to be able to live in in the home. Um so I think for me, I I want to say shout out to Rancho Cielo, you know, one of the things that I heard from them was that there's so many students in South County, how do we build a better partnership? And they're really supporting the students to gain skills and knowledge, especially in the trade, and I feel, I think we've talked about especially that age group, that job skills is really important, getting them employment, getting them, you know, out of the circumstances that they're in, so I thought that was really good and just kind of pairing it how we can support that with our youth violence prevention program and really get providing some of those job opportunities, but they're doing amazing things, so shout out to them. So we'll move on to our next item on the agenda, which is our future agenda items, and I'll start with
I'm sorry, I had a couple of items, I having verbal reporting.
Oh, yes.
Sorry.
Forgot, skip you, okay, go ahead, Megan.
Yeah, I apologize, Mayor, for interrupting, um so you have my my written report, and I won't add too much to that, but I did want to remind um council that I will be out of town from July twelfth through the thirtieth. Um in my absence, um Don is gonna serve as acting city manager. Um I will be back in July thirty-first. Um we do have one meeting in July, July nineteenth. Um we're gonna try to keep it um light, and then, like I said, Tom will be in my stead during that time. Um, I did also want to mention that I, you know, um work um with the the team on economic development. Um I think I've let everyone know that Brian Swanson is, um actually, today was his last meeting. Um so he he um is moving on um to another jurisdiction, that's very lucky to have him. Um and in the meantime, I'm gonna, you know, spend some extra time with community and economic development and also look to see what we can do for economic development that might be able to help um bringing in someone that I would come um to counsel, um to really help with some of the tenants, some of the commercial um development that I think um we probably need some additional support on. And then um lastly, um I think Darnine had, is reaching out to all of you about um some training slash um discussion opportunities. Um also to work on a strategic plan. And um I'll probably reach out to each of you about the dais, we're looking, we're starting the work to improve the dais. Um and I kind of want each of your feedback on, you know, what that comfort, what's comfortable for you and what you would like to see, so. So that that's it, that concludes my report.
Thank, thank you, Megan, yeah, we're looking forward to that. Um, okay, so we'll move on to our next um future agenda items, and I'll start with Mayor Phil Temmuth, they have a future agenda item.
Right.
Okay, council member Corralo?
Um, yes, I just have one, um I know we have talked before about the uh appointments for different committees and and the planning commission, and I believe we have a a couple of changes coming on our planning commissioner. So I wanted to see if we could um add on the next agenda, uh just maybe a a discussion on uh the appointments, see if we want to make any changes as the council to be codes. Um I think with districting coming up, it might be a good idea to maybe make some changes now that will reflect um, you know, the the different districts.
I have two items, one is uh update on the, just an update on the T-Mobile, I don't, I know the grants do this um do this month, so wanted to just make sure we are submitting, if we are submitting for that T-Mobile grant. Um, and then uh the other one was on the, I know I had talked about it the last time, just on the quarter parties, I haven't seen as many of them, but there's still some at the entrance of Solid Ed. Um and then just my, um the other one that I want to bring back to the council to for discussion, Megan, and this is not, I mean, uh not a heavy priority, but homeless encampment goals, I know we've talked about that and we've done the workshop, we did the workshop, but I think for me it's coming back. How will we, what are the goals that we're gonna be moving forward with? I know King City had the opportunity to be able to obtain fifty thousand dollars from the COC as part of their partnership as well, to be able to put together. Um what they're gonna be doing is removing their homelessness from um the river. And they're looking at the Mark Inn to be able to do nineteen units, and and they're doing transitional housing, but that's not ready yet, but they really want to support the families from getting out of the river and really giving them those resources, so I guess for me, it's, there's money out there, and I know the council, we've talked about it, there's money out there, but if we don't have our plan in place, then we'll never be able to access some of these dollars, so that we can bring it back to just what what is it that our goals are gonna be in terms of the plan that we sup- that we approved? And then my last comment is, the council last time on the last call had, there was a comment from the public in terms of the stipends. Um if the uh board members could receive stipends, and so I think I forward uh everybody, I forwarded to Megan to forward to you all the uh bylaws and then the bylaws of the cemetery board, there is stipends already in there, so that's already something that they can do, just to encourage more people to be able to you know, to engage, and and I'm sure if there's already in the provisions of the bylaws, they can increase those if that's not enough, but I mean, that's a determination of the board, but I just wanted to give, you know, an update to our council members, but also to our residents on that. Okay, so if there is no further items of business to conduct, and I do adjourn this meeting.